I don't think we have any public officials here tonight. Being election night, there's a, it was quite a line over at City Hall. So I want to thank everyone for doing their civic duty and getting out and voting. So we will move right on to to the, excuse me, presentation. Member of the month?
It's my pleasure to do this member of the, members of the month. A little bit of background, Craig and Tricia Brown, together with Jessica and Kalen Morris, are being nominated for residents of the month in recognition of their creativity, initiative, and community spirit in founding the Docket Treat event. What began as an idea among two sets of close friends to create a fun and safe, unique Halloween experience on the water for children and family, has grown into one of Canyon Lake's most beloved community traditions. Docket Treat started with just about 10 houses and a few decorated boats, and is now expanded to include 26 houses and over 45 boats, I lost count, dozens of decorated docks, and hundreds of delighted children and families. But more than that, what I think is truly the inspiration is that Docket Treat provides homeowners who don't typically get trick-or-treaters at their homes with the chance to decorate, dress up, and join in the spirit of Halloween. It also offers a safe, family-friendly alternative to crowded neighborhoods, which can often be overwhelming for younger children. The event creates a unique sensory experience, viewing decorations and lights from the water at night. That feels magical for participants of all ages. Many of our community's families are multi-household, or share holiday time duty to custody arrangements. Docket Treat gives parents and children an additional opportunity to celebrate Halloween together, even if they might not be together on the actual holiday. The event also resonates deeply with many of our professionals who live in Canyon Lake, including doctors, first responders, FBI, ATF, and all the rest of the alphabet family, who often work during traditional holiday hours. What began as a creative use of our main community amenity has evolved into a cherished tradition that fosters connection, inclusion, and pride across Canyon Lake. Tonight, the board would like to formally recognize Craig and Tricia Brown, and Jessica and Kalen Morris as residents of their month for their outstanding contribution to community spirit and for creating Docket Treat, an event that has brought fun, inclusion, and pride to the residents of Canyon Lake. And if that wasn't enough, Tricia and Craig, along with another set of their friends, managed to win first place in the Canyon Lake Yacht Club Chili Cook-Off this past weekend. So just a little bit of overachievers back there, okay?
Thank you, Laney. All right, let's, we would like to bring up our Community Patrol members. Zach and Ken, please come on up and give us an update on Community Patrol, please.
Good evening. So I would like to talk about in September, under e-bikes, we had nine reckless citations issued for riders. Primarily, most of these were issued on September 5th, when many people came into the community to go ahead and ride through the community and do what's called a ride-out. That day, we were prepared for that. We were able to go ahead and collect a lot of data from that, and we were able to issue nine citations overall. I would also like to go ahead and take a moment and talk about, in September, we had 28 citations issued for misuse of access identification. This is primarily POA cards. To expand on that, these are people who have Members POA cards, are attempting to enter the community, identifying themselves with the POA card, stating that was their way of entering the community. Out of that, we had 12 citations issued from Main Gate, nine citations issued from East Gate, and seven those issued from North Gate. I would also like to point out, on Halloween night, the team was very busy where they were able to confiscate eight more POA cards that were used for misuse of access identification, and we were able to go ahead and to just secure the access control. Ken?
Thank you, Zach. And speaking of Halloween, for those of you, I'm sure you enjoyed seeing all the kids having fun and running around the community. Some of you coming home from work after a long week, and having that rush hour, and to find yourself in a very long line with everybody else who's coming home from work that day. The POA was prepared for that. We staffed up the gates. We added one extra officer at each gate, excuse me, and also had a supervisor at each gate to manage that backup as much as we could. We were able to get people through the lines as fast as the red lights and the traffic lights could feed us, especially at the main gate. So we kept up with that. There was just a lot of people coming into the community during a short time. In fact, we had between the hours of 3:00 and 9:00 p.m., 4,381 cars came through the gates. And about a little less than half of that were guests. So I received some feedback from some members, some of it good, some of it less than wonderful. There's a lot of expectations about getting, getting home and getting to your house, because you live here, and, and that is on the board's mind. In fact, we just had a conversation about that, and I'll let Bill tee off on that a little bit, but we are thinking about it, we are strategizing. We're going to try some new things from the POA and from the Community Patrol. So we'll see you when that happens.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Any questions or comments for Zach or Ken? Appreciate what you do. I know this is, we're, we're now entering busy season again for Community Patrol. We're, we've got Halloween behind us. We have Thanksgiving coming up. We've got, well, Christmas, boat parade, golf cart parade, New Year's, all the fun things. So appreciate this coming. Question?
All right, I think you guys did a good job. I just have a simple question, because this time I was caught outside of the gate. Is 4th of July the same or worse?
4th of July is a different animal, because people kind of trickle into the community throughout the entire day, leading up to the fireworks show. On Halloween, it's a different animal. On Halloween, you have sunset, kids going to go trick-or-treating, grown-ups are going to have parties, and so in a very condensed time period, and during a very unfortunate time period, which is the rush hour traffic, that is really the root cause of what caused, with the surround, a line of cars surrounding the community trying to get in.
You probably know this, but I came back from Elsinore and was going to the sports bar, and there was a line of cars coming through the parking lot. So I didn't leave the sports bar until after the Dodger game was over, so.
And that's probably why they won, and so good for you.
Any other questions for Community Patrol? Thank you, guys, appreciate, oh, wait, there is one more, hold on, come forward.
Hi, Dan Lequoffers, good job. I mean, it's, it's a tough thing trying to get people all shoved in in a very short time. Looking at a lot of the Facebook comments and the lines, particularly out the North Gate and what have you, there was one comment that I actually thought was a pretty good idea, and that's to consider anyways, having one gate devoted to residents.
Dan, we'll, we'll address that. I've got an announcement to make on that, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys, Ken, Zach. So that point, and again, we, we received a number of letters from the community. Certainly, there was quite a bit on social media, a lot of frustration with, among the community to get in here, and it's tough. We, we experienced it at 4th of July, we experienced it, I know I experienced it last Thanksgiving, always on, on Halloween. The fact that we had construction going on on Railroad Canyon at the same time. If you're coming into North Gate, there was a vehicle fire, or a residence fire on that, and so there's a lot of service trucks up there that, that impeded that. And it just pretty much was a tough, tough situation. The triple witching hour, if you call it, or the perfect storm. The board discussed it at length today, and, and we've talked about a number of measures we could do to try and improve things. And, and as tough as it is, we are willing to try something new. I do, we do appreciate the comments that we receive back from the community. And there is one new thing that, that we're going to try as a pilot for Thanksgiving, because we're not sure how to work. But what is, what is recommended is that we're going to, the main gate, the whole main gate will be dedicated to guest entry. All three lanes coming in will be guest entry only. The east gate will be resident entry only. Again, all three lanes at the east gate will be resident entry only, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. North Gate will remain as the same service that it has now. So we're going to try this and see if that hopefully, hopefully alleviates the backlog and the issues that we have. We resonate, we, we recognize that that will create some inconvenience for certain members, but it should help the community as a whole. So we, we have some details to work out. We only have a few weeks, a couple of weeks, rather, to, to get the details out. So we will be communicating with the community. It's very important that we get the message out as much as possible. So we'll be putting it electronically, we'll send out messages, the text messages, social media, every forum we have, we want to make everyone know. We're going to try it, we'll see how it works. If it works successfully, we will consider applying that to future holiday events as well. So again, just to, for clarity, for Thanksgiving Day, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., the main gate will be, all three gates will be for guests. The exit lane has to remain open for emergency vehicles and, and member exit. The east gate will be only for residents. If a guest comes in that gate, they'll be turned around and told to go to the main gate. The north gate will remain, it's, it's normal operations. So that's what we're going to try, we'll see how it works. Anyone have any questions about that? Mrs. Van Vliet?
I am just curious, on Gets Road somewhere, can we have one of those signs? Can we have big signage saying, "Residents only"?
Yep, that's one, one of the details we're working out. We do have to get approval from, from the cities and law enforcements and so forth, so we need to work with our, our local authorities on doing it. So we will, yeah, we will look to have as much signage as we can to notify everyone. But again, this is a pilot, it's a good suggestion that was offered by one of our residents, and we're going to give it a shot. So thank you for the recommendation, and, and we'll stay in touch.
Just a comment on that, but Carolyn, to your point and to Bill's point, it will depend on communication, right? Because then, you know, people will get frustrated if they're on the, so whatever communication vehicles, this is one for Facebook to put out there, for the signs, for our electronic boards, for our push text messages, for, you know, any vehicle to communicate what this pilot will be like. But our intention is to make sure that our residents, first and foremost, are able to get to their home in the most efficient and prompt manner, and then secondarily, to make it as easy and as prompt as possible for our guests.
All right. Any member comments tonight?
I do not have any.
Dog. All right, Laney, it's looking good. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
All right, Cheryl, let's talk about 28-day reading.
Good evening. Today, we are going to be asking the board to approve for a 28-day reading for an overhaul from Sections 9 and Sections 10 of the Rules and Regulations, as well as the fine schedule changes for PC 2.8, 5.13, and PC 6.3. There's also inside this change is going to be a new application process for those properties that have sewer easements. So all of this is inclusive in this overhaul. So the rule revision for Section 9 and 10 have been made to be in compliance with the Shoreline Settlement Agreement between the EBMWD and CLPOA. EBMWD lease great, lease grants permission to CLPOA to maintain the shoreline and the improvements located on their property. Both EBMWD and CLPOA reached an agreement regarding the shoreline application process. This 28-day reading includes the shoreline application, additional application process for properties with sewer easements, fine schedule changes for the PC 2.8, 5.13, 6.3, and some other incidental operating rule changes. It is recommended that the Board of Directors approve the 28-day read of the revision to PC Sections 9 and 10, and the fine schedule changes and the additions of PC 2.8 and 5.13 as attached.
All right, thank you, Cheryl. Do we have a motion to approve this 28-day reading?
Motion.
Second.
First and the second, any member comments or questions about this item 8.1 on the agenda? No? Board member comments or questions?
I would just like everyone to know what we're, this document, and it is effectively a document, excuse me, is approximately 20 pages long, single-spaced, very, very technical document. And the two people that worked on these are our legal counsel over there, and are planning an appliance committee in the ACC. And so I want to acknowledge the work they put into this. It's been months and months and months. And also, the, the Water District is a, is a party to this. I'll guess, I'll give them credit for working on it as well. But for my money, the two people in this room that worked very, very hard on this are sitting right down there and right over there. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor of approving this 28-day reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
All right, Ken?
Last summer, the Board of Directors approved a new rule, GR 5.2I, which involved prohibitive personal electronic vehicles in designated areas. Those designated areas are the Lodge Pavilion, excuse me, Lodge Peninsula and Holiday Harbor. Great thing about this rule is, we don't have to add a rule every time we want to designate an area as prohibitive, we could just add a bullet point to this rule for other areas we'd like to add. I'm currently asking to look at adding vacant lots. Here's the story. I received multiple calls and emails from members who are frustrated when kids are riding e-bikes on vacant lots. They ride fast on the street and go into the lot where they make jumps out of dirt and berms, and they're creating dust. And when they exit the property, they're scattering dirt into the roadway. Because of this, we've looked at what we could do with our current rules, and we don't have a rule that speaks to that. So it is recommended that the board approve the 28-day read to add vacant lots unless the rider has the permission of the property owner to this rule of electronic vehicles in designated areas.
Thank you, Ken. Is there a motion to approve this 28-day reading?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any member comments or questions? Any board comments or questions? No, no, no. I do. I asked legal counsel on the, our ability to, to enforce something on private property. Our current bylaws, our current CCNRs do not allow that. Basically, our rules apply to POA-owned property. And in this case, we're talking about going on someone's personal property and enforcing it. So the question I have is, how do we enforce this?
We identify the kids, and we ask them if they have permission to be there. And if they do not, then we can write a citation based on this rule, the way it's written. If they say they have permission, and we find out that they didn't, because we can contact the property owner through our North Star system, we can call them and ask them, and ask them, "We have a bunch of kids on your property? Would you like us to, or do you have, give them permission to be there?"
Do we have, how, how many cases or how many occurrences do we get where this, this occurs per year? And is it a health and safety matter?
It can be, because they're riding fast down the hills into the properties. I've seen videos on TikTok and it's, videos from members also that see this, and it's different kids going to about three or four lots that are their favorites. One of them is near the lodge, and there's a couple others in some very, you know, residential areas where you just have one lot surrounded by houses. The, there are no analytics on how often it happens, because as stated, we don't have anything to take action, to write a citation, to create those analytics for us. I do, I just know that we have many members of the community who are getting tired of this, and it shows itself more during the summer. We just haven't gotten to it, or I haven't, just haven't gotten to it until now. One of the reasons I did pull this is I, I shared a, a video that I actually saw on TikTok, where they were on one of our dirt lots, and they were all driving down at night. TikTok, yeah. Did I say Ted Talks? Oh, 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 sorry, TikTok, I will enunciate well, better. But yeah, so, and I have that video, and it shows kids that we know to be in this neighborhood, because we've cited them before, and we just don't have a rule to cite them for that. And it creates havoc in these small neighborhoods with the, with the members.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor of approving the 28-day reading, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to oppose.
Hearing four in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Good evening. Hello. This item is for the 28-day reading to, oh, I'm sorry. This item is for the 28-day reading to remove GR 4.2B and 4.2C from the Rules and Regulations. The Rules and Regulations Review Committee reviewed these sections as part of its effort to streamline the document. Both items are related to garage sale permit procedures, which are administrative rather than enforceable rules. Removing them will reduce redundancy and keep the rules focused on governing member behavior. Garage sale permits will continue to be handled internally under existing processes. There is no fiscal impact, as these rules do not include fines. Staff recommends approval of removal of GR 4.2B and 4.2C as a 28-day reading.
Is there a motion to approve this 28-day reading?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any member comments or questions about this? Board member comments or questions? All in favor of approving this 28-day reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
The next item is another 28-day reading. This one is for GR 5.1U to add a new traffic rule under, titled "Right Turn Only." The proposal was submitted to the Rules and Regulations Review Committee by the Community Patrol Manager to address a gap in traffic enforcement. There, we have specific intersection in Canyon Lake that's marked "right turn only" for safety, but there's currently no rule to fine vehicles that make a left turn at that location. The proposed rule, GR 5.1U, establishes a $100 fine for failure to make a right turn. We're designated, this addition should help improve roadway safety and support consistent enforcement for patrol. It's recommended that the board approve GR 5.1U as a 28-day reading.
There's a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Member comments, questions? Board members, comments, questions? All in favor, one more, yep.
No, I just want to point out the, this is a safety issue, and anybody that's listening or even doing these things, wouldn't do it out in regular traffic or public roads. To see that people are doing this, when we have e-bikes and golf carts, pedestrians, I am really supportive of this rule, and I'm just amazed that people are actually violating this rule. So good job, and thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving the 28-day reading, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Andrea, you are up.
Okay, last month, we came to the board for a 28-day reading regarding approval of a general rule 1.4 disciplinary hearings and appeals of fines. We are recommending that the Board of Directors approve the revisions to GR Rule 1.4, disciplinary hearings and fines and suspensions tonight.
All right, we have a motion for this 28-day reading. Sorry, not 28-day, this is for approval.
Approval. Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member comments? Board member comments, questions? Nope. This is, this is brought up in 28-day reading last time, and all in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
8.6.
Okay, so tonight, our 28-day reading was last month. We're, we're bringing this to the board to approve the increase of fines for PC 1.2 and PC 4.1. So PC 1.2 is starting a project prior to approval, and PC 4.1 is lot maintenance. The fiscal impact would increase it from, to 100 to 250 per month for PC 1.2, and the fine for PC 4.1 would increase from 100, a time for, to 100 per month. It's recommended that the board propose, sorry, it's recommended that the Board of Directors approve the proposed fine changes to PC 1.2 and 4.1 as attached.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a motion to approve this, this measure? 4.1 is wrong? What needs to be corrected?
Is it 4.1 or 1.2, Cheryl? It is correct? Okay, that's okay, thanks for verification.
Any, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Second.
Member comments or questions? Board members, comments?
I, I have a comment on this one. We, we actually talked about this quite a while. Starting a project prior to approval. Our intent here is, if you're going to change the flowers in your flowerbed, it doesn't come under this ruling, right? This is about serious things that are actually a risk or a hazard. Can I define what those risks and hazards are? The second-story addition, things like that. Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, the reason we can increase these is to be compliant with Assembly Bill 130, is that anything that relates to health and safety. So I will be supportive of it to the extent that our planning compliance team is, is trained to be able to differentiate and apply this situation only in the cases where it is an impact or a threat to health and safety of the community. Okay, all in favor of approving this item, say, 8.6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing five in favor, motion carries. And President Bembley, I just need you guys to sign the resolution because it is a safety thing and an increase of the fine. We need to make sure that we have you guys sign this. I'm going to pass it down.
Thank you. While we're signing, go ahead Steve.
Good evening. This is a BII to ask for funds for artificial turf on our lodge lawn. In 2023, the lodge lawn was redone for a new state, a new stage venue. Due to the large increase in the lawn venue usage, the lawn has become more difficult to maintain and keep attractive. The increase in usage is harder on the lawn because of water scheduling, increased traffic and event setups. We would like to replace the lawn with an artificial turf. Some of the positives of making this change would be it can withstand heavy, heavy use such as all the, all the vents that we put on. Doesn't get muddy or patchy, stays lush and uniform year round regardless of weather or soil conditions or shade. No mowing, edging or fertilizing or reseeding. Reduces landscape labor costs and requires little, little water or no irrigation except for the occasional rinsing. Fiscal impact would be $95,783 from the reserve fund 02670. This has a potential cost savings of $14,000 a year in maintenance and water usage. Staff requests the Board of Directors approve funding of $95,783 plus a 5% contingency from the repair replacement fund 026700.
Is there a motion to approve this item? On the lodge turf? We have to have first and second in order to consider it. So is there a motion? Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Any member comments or questions about this item for turf at the lodge lawn? Board members, questions or comments? I'm going to start down here with Greg and then we'll work our way down.
Uh, Steve, I was at a meeting recently talking about this subject and someone said, well, you know, that artificial turf gets really hot and we have a lot of events out there where people might be inclined to go barefoot and that kind of thing. But I understand there's a fix for that question built into this proposal.
Yeah, so there's called a cooling feel, fill. It's mixed in with the, with the artificial turf and it, it pretty much keeps the turf cooler than it would if it didn't have it in it. You know, standardly, a lot of, a lot of companies, they use sand and that also keeps the turf a little bit cooler, but this, this newer product's supposed to keep it even more cooler. For example, when we did the dog park, a lot of people were concerned with the artificial turf and, and on the paws of the dogs. And actually, a lot of the people that were concerned said this is actually a lot cooler than we thought and that, that didn't even have this Ancool filler, just had the, the sand filler. One of the members actually went over there and shot the artificial turf on a, about 100 degree day with a heat gun and it came back at 83 degrees, so.
This was the subject of a lot of conversation, I think. I know I struggled with the decision a little bit, less about the financial, although that's a concern, but more because I'm convinced that when we just do nothing but inhale the heat from plastics somewhere down the line, we're all going to be convinced that this isn't the best philosophy. But having said that, it is incredibly difficult, if not impossible, for your team to know when to water before a wedding. And there's nothing worse than coming to an event that you've paid good money to hold and be sitting or sloshing around. Or it's dried and it doesn't look too pristine. So I'm fully supportive of it, but it doesn't come without a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth debate and it's, you know, the rock of the hard place sometimes. And so just kind of want to know it wasn't just a lighthearted decision. We all took it under consideration, but I think ultimately our, our concerns were met. And I think it's really important when we want to make sure our amenities have the best bang for their buck and people come back and book their other events, that, you know, that green, that facility, that lawn is really important in making that come true.
I want to piggyback a little bit on what she said, the plastics and stuff like that. When evaluating this, and we all know that our lake has PFOS in it. What's the story with this? Is it PFOS free? And then I have another question after that.
I don't have an answer for, for PFOS free. This is the same type of artificial turf that we've put in other places in the community. We could do some more research and, and look at that, but I do not, I mean, until this recently, I, I was not aware that, that artificial turf had PFOS in it.
Yeah, I don't know either way. That's what I'm asking you, you're the expert.
I, I have not, I have not read that officially on, on any articles. It's only been on some hearsay in Facebook.
Okay. And my next question, and I know you're waiting for this one, goes back to a lot of the social media comments and you kind of touched on it with the cooling fill, but a lot of people look at the price of this and go, why is it so expensive? It's my yard only costs this much. Or some contractors in here will say, hey, I could do it for less. Can you explain what all is involved with this that made the price what it is?
Well, it's, it's over 9,100 square feet and most lots in here, their front yard is maybe 150, 200 square feet. So that's where a lot of, the price is going to be a lot more substantial because it's, it's almost 10,000 square feet. It's, it's about the size, almost the size of some of the lots in here in Canyon Lake.
Thank, thank you Steve. A couple of questions. The ongoing maintenance and the, the, how long, you know, do you think this lawn will be in place before we'd have to replace it?
My guess would be 15 to 20 years. The, the warranty on the, on the product is 10 years, but you know, from, from what I've seen of other, other artificial turf lawns, they, they hang up or hold up pretty well. We hold events also on the island that is artificial turf. And if you look at that, it looks like almost a day is, is we installed it and that was installed almost seven years ago.
I have one question Steve. Why not take the $80,000 bid?
So I knew this, this question was being asked. Obviously, the, the cool fill has something to do with it. Also, they use larger Trex boards for the, for the headers around the, around the, the border. And to piggyback a little, or to answer your question a little bit more Jeff, most contractors don't put the, the Trex border in for the, for the grass to be stapled or nailed to because that actually adds for more commercial durability than what you find on your, on your residential lawn. And then also the artificial turf is, is a little bit better and it'll have a little bit more base rock and a better drainage.
Thanks Steve. Yeah, it's a, good to have a high, low, and we took the middle one and it has, and it's because of a higher quality. So it's best value, in other words, is what you're saying. I'm pleased with the fact this is a, the payback on this is six to seven years in terms of deferred or saved maintenance costs or water costs. Also, we did take a hard look at this because this was not a planned expense. We did take a hard look at this in terms of what impact does this have on our reserve? And we got a very thorough description from our controller today and that this, even with this expense, we still will come in at or above budget on our reserve projection. So there shouldn't be an impact from that standpoint. So that's all positive. So with that, let's do a roll call to vote.
Director Doherty?
Yes.
Director Cooney?
Yes.
Director Medved?
Yes.
Director Bill?
Yes.
President Bembley?
Yes.
Hearing five in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you Steve. Sorry for the grilling Steve, but I know you can take it. All right, Boardly is on committee reports. Greg, let's start with you.
The Recreation Committee is very fortunate to be fully staffed right now. We have no vacancies on our committee and actually, although we don't have alternates per se, we do have a couple of people waiting in the wings to join the committee. So we're very pleased about that because a lot of the other committees are still looking for people. So for some reason or another, people want to get on the Recreation Committee and that's, I think, because we're kind of the committee that thinks up small projects which are affordable and easy to do. I do want to talk about, and we are focusing not so much on projects because that's a little bit more in the purview of the FPC group, but we are focusing on activities now in conjunction with working with Tiffany in activities. And actually, I want to talk real quick about an activity that did arise, not from the Rec Committee, but from Tiffany's department, which is the Turkey Trot. Now, if you're wondering what that is, she's just beginning to advertise it and promote it now, but on November 25th, that's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, it's basically for runners and it's going to start at the lodge and there'll be three lengths, you know, small, medium and large on Canyon Lake streets. And the small one would be for the kids if that's what they want to do. And the medium ones are for the medium runners and the long ones for the long range runners. I'm not any of those. And so she's come up with that idea, it's going to be promoted. And then following that is going to be our, you know, Thanksgiving, two days later, the tree lighting, the golf cart parade and all these things that we love so much here in Canyon Lake. So the rec meets every other month now and it's excited for the future.
Okay. The Equestrian Center, that's work group, that is one of my committees. The Equestrian Center Work Group Board, it held its first meeting with lots of energy and optimism. During the first session, the board elected officers, discussed committee goals for fiscal 2026, aligned and agreed, identified two maintenance projects, one scheduled for November and the other for December. They planned one social recreational event with fundraising potential and began collaboration with operation and external vendor on the new arena footing improvements. The group is now developing its broader work group and welcomes participation. The group meets on the third Tuesday of every month in the Magnolia Room and anyone interested in participating or just learning more is encouraged to attend or contact Rick Daddell, the board chair. And committee details are also available on the POA website. And I really do want to put a plug in for this work group. The, the Equestrian Center is also one of our most valuable amenities. If everybody, you know, isn't necessarily a horse enthusiast, but it is a very big asset to our home values and recreational, you know, for children and for learning as well as for adults. So if you have a few hours, if you have a skill, if you have some time to donate, please reach out and get involved with the, with the work group because it, it will make a huge difference to the amenity and to our community in general. The Rules Committee, Tiffany and I are both on that and they continue to review and reduce and consolidate, I'll say that three times fast, the rules and the separation of rules and the process. And they are deep, deep into this and they're doing a lot of really good work. And then lastly, but not least, I have the Appeals Committee. And first, anybody in the audience or anybody who is listening on home, my first from the board, myself and the committee, a sincere apology. This meeting, a week ago Monday night, I guess, Ken, we were there until 10 o'clock at night. And it is not our intention, it is not our desire, it is not the best resident experience to have people check in before six and be sitting there till 10 o'clock. So again, it didn't fall on deaf ears, it didn't go unnoticed, sincere apologies. The reason for that is a couple of things. We have, okay, I say we, I actually am not part of that, it's Ken, but have moved towards getting the time between when a ticket is, the violation occurs and the ticket is received. And so we've managed to reduce that lag time. And so there's a lot of people who got a lot of information at one time. And then also the new processes because of AB 135. And so I think, I don't know how many exact cases, I think it was like 80 in appeals on Monday night. So what am I saying? I'm saying one, apologies again, two, we are working at a way to make that a better process. And it may, it may mean we have to have more than that meeting. We have already decided not to go dark in December, to hold the December meeting so it doesn't go long. We don't want to react because we have a spike. We want to be able to, you know, measure that and see, but if it continues to have high rates of response, then not only will we have a December meeting that wasn't otherwise planned, but we will also look at if we need to have additional meetings so that we can try to get people in and out in the most timely fashion while still making sure we give them their, their due process. It is interesting to note that as the fees have gone up, I think it is perhaps a little bit more challenging to simply write a check for those offenses. And so one of the things that has come out in, in the process from the committee, and I think we have not had time to vet it yet, I'm just putting it out, is there's been a lot of requests for some aspects of community service. And so I think it's something that I've brought back to the board for discussion. We have not tackled that yet, but it has come up as a request at least five times in our last meeting. So I think it's something that we will take a look at, but increased fines are definitely making, simply writing a check a little bit more challenging. And that's it for me, that's it for my reports.
713. So I'm with the, I'm the liaison for the FPC Committee and I will say that things have slowed down for us. There's not a lot of new projects on the horizon. So we've kind of shifted over into more maintenance type of roles such as evaluating the reflectivity on the street signs, the markings in the road, safety and visibility. We've been working with the operations group with Steve and his group on that. With the Security Advisory Committee, we are taking a different approach. There will be some changes coming up. It's going to focus on a lot more safety as well as security. They've been working very hard on viable options regarding e-bike access and control. They will continue to keep looking into that. We also are closing in on wrapping up the secure motorcycle parking. I believe Steve said today that we will be having the automation done here in the next few weeks. And so we can have a nicer area that's safer and secure for all our motorcycle riders. And that's really about all I got tonight.
Thanks Jeff. Now that Halloween's behind us, if you haven't noticed on your television, there are Christmas ads. Now is the time to start Christmas shopping and don't forget, because this weekend on November 8th and 9th is the Senior Center Boutique. They've got, they've got 50 or so vendors lined up. Always a good, good lineup. They've got some bakers, a great, great place to go. So if you, if you need to get some gifts still, you haven't finished your Christmas shopping, it's a good, good place to go. Also then, I support the, the Green Committee and the TWG Committee and the TWG Group, the Tuesday Work Group, they, they volunteer on the golf course. They put in 330, 40, 343 volunteer hours last month to help improve and maintain the golf course and we thank, thank them for all their service. Bill?
Hello, I'm liaison for the Finance Committee and we have finished one of our objectives for the year, which is to create a dashboard of, in one page, it tells you the state of the health of the POA. It talks about year-to-date expenses, non-assessed, assessed income, operating cash, September 2025 actual to budget. And starting next month, this will be in your board packets. So you can watch that fun, exciting news and learn all about where we are. The Finance Committee also provided year-over-year budget recommendations for next fiscal year to the board. They had a few clarifying questions, which we're working to do and to straighten out and provide additional information. The other in-flight project we have is our HOA benchmarks where we look at HOAs in the surrounding area and kind of compare what amenities you get, what, you know, what capabilities you get based on different fine structures and annual fees. From the Lake Advocacy Committee, we are about to, we, the board reviewed today, we're about to publish a series of mini articles on the lake. They're, they're educational oriented. How do you learn, you know, in consumable format? Each article is about a page, a page and a quarter. Eric's team will be taking the content that was reviewed today, formatting it and pushing it out in the appropriate marketing channels. The other thing that we still need to work on is the Lake Advocacy Management Plan for the lake. We have some documents that are a little bit older and we're trying to figure out exactly what's usable from that and what we can take forward in an effective manner. I do want to compliment staff and Eric and our GEI consultants. They have gathered some really phenomenal data. We're looking forward to helping pull that together and start creating some trends. And now I have to put a plug in, we have an opening on the LAC if anyone's interested. Thank you.
All right, Eric, GM report. All right, Eric, GM, uh, report.
Thank you. Um, as you probably know, our golden algae treatment started this past Monday. Uh, we learned this afternoon that the applicators in our, our water task force, um, expect that the treatment should be completed by this Thursday and the community should expect the lake to stay closed through Sunday, which was, uh, pretty much always our plan. Um, Bill and Ken both touched on Halloween and as Bill mentioned, uh, we're gonna do a pilot program where we have East Gate, uh, for residents only access Monday, or, um, I'm sorry, on Thanksgiving from nine AM to nine PM. Um, we'll be putting a lot of communication out that, it's a pilot program, we're gonna try it out for Thanksgiving and, and we'll evaluate after we do that for that day. Um, pilot project, or I'm sorry, the paving project for year three, we're now in our second phase and that's going well. And motorcycle parking, Jeff just mentioned that, uh, that project's complete except for the gate operator and card readers, those should be coming later this month. And the golf course overseeding, annual overseeding is completed and the golf course and country club reopen and the course looks fantastic and that's all I have tonight, thanks.
Thank you Eric, all right, uh, closing comments. Bill, why don't you lead us off?
Uh, it's been, uh, it's been an interesting challenge, right, with the lake and, um, everybody wants answers, they want yes or no answers. Um, sometimes the answers aren't exact and we have to experiment a little bit and, um, I'm grateful for staff and board for meeting and agreeing to proceed with this next step, which seems to be a reasonable level of risk.
Thank you. Jeff?
I really don't have a lot of closing remarks. It's, um, I'm pretty boring, so there's not a lot to say. Um, so I'm just gonna pass it on down to Lainey.
Thanks Jeff. Um, as
She's not boring.
As, uh, Bill said, it is the holiday season and with that upon us, there's a lot of fantastic events, but I do want to put a plug in for the boat parade, it is the longest standing boat parade in Riverside County. Um, it is our forty-third annual boat parade. It is, I think, you know, up there in the top events of all of Canyon Lake. Um, and there is a how to decorate your boat clinic this Sunday and I think one of the reasons people sometimes, you know, I, I don't even know how to begin and there are so many tricks to the trade to make what looks like a very, very complicated, uh, project actually quite easy. And I really encourage, you know, people, if you're even thinking about it, if you want to do a partner or whatever, but there is, there is actually such a fun event to be on a boat and to be weaving the way, all the way through the lake and see the parties and the excitement, it's just a truly magical night and I think the goal this year is to have thirty-plus boats in the parade, we came close last year. And so, um, I really encourage anybody thinking about it, please come to the decorate your boat clinic this Sunday and, uh, we'll give you a hand, try it out, you figure it out and grab a partner, grab a neighbor and let's make this the best boat parade of all time.
I would like to give a shout out to the city of Canyon Lake for their initiative to start their own police department, which is, most of you probably know is well underway. They've hired a Chief of Police, Jim Rails, from the Riverside Sheriff's Office, who is familiar with our community. Uh, they've figured out the funding and although there are skeptics out there still about whether this will work for them or not, I am excited about it for this reason. You know, that old equation of one plus one equals three? I'm hoping that, uh, the start of their, uh, department, which is ahead of schedule, as I understand it, should be mid-year next year when it gets up and running, that our Community Patrol folks and the new police department, when it gets up and running, are going to be able to fulfill that one plus one equals, equals three equation, um, all in the interest, uh, and actually this came up today when we were talking about Halloween and the traffic and what we could do to, to, uh, make it better next year. And, uh, it was pointed out that, hey, by next Halloween, the city's gonna have their police department up and running and we can work together to craft a solution and hopefully what happened the other night won't happen again, so, um, I'm excited about the police department and I'm excited about the future of public safety in Canyon Lake for those reasons. Happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Thanks Greg. Um, I, I want to, uh, also put a note out there and there's, the city of Canyon Lake will have a Veterans Day event, uh, Sept- uh, November eleventh, encourage everyone to go there, certainly want to thank all our veterans for their, for their service and that. Um, and I'd like to end the night, note with a story. Um, given this election day.
This is a short story, right Bill?
What's the, what's the over and under?
You'd have to go for about seventy.
So I'd like to end the night with a story, somebody asked me to finish with a story, so I mean, this is a nice story to tell and that is, there was, um, a priest and a politician and they both died. And they went to heaven. And they're standing at the gates with, uh, Saint Peter and Saint Peter said, uh, to the priest, he said, you know, you lived your life in service to the Lord and so here's a key to a studio apartment that has, that you can have forever. And he said, thank you very much. He turned to the politician and said, here is a key to the penthouse of the thing with a view of eternity forever. And he said, well, thank you very much. And the priest said, uh, Saint Peter, I gotta tell you, you know, I don't mean to be ungrateful for it, but, but again, lived my whole life in service to the Lord and it, it doesn't really seem very fair or equitable. And Saint Peter said, well, you know, you gotta understand, up here, Father, priests are a dime a dozen, but politicians, we get very few of those. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you Canyon Lake, see you in December.